Good evening and welcome. My name is Linda Heine. I am a member of the League of Women Voters of New Ulm. I will be your moderator at this League of Women Voters St. Peter Area Candidate Forum, featuring candidates for St. Peter Independent School District 508 School Board. This forum is being presented with cosponsors, the St. Peter Chamber of Commerce and the St. Peter Herald. I will be assisted by Carolyn Dobler, Secretary of the St. Peter League. League of Women Voters is a local, state, and national nonpartisan volunteer group. We encourage informed and active participation of citizens in government, and we influence policy through education and advocacy. We do not support candidates or political parties. Tonight's event is designed to allow the candidates an opportunity to express their views on issues important to members of the public in preparation for the general election on November 4th, 2025. Candidates follow the unbiased and impartial format established and published by the League of Women Voters of Minnesota. This forum is being recorded in its entirety without an audience on September 9th in the Governor's Room at the St. Peter Community Center. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. I will ask questions tonight that have been submitted by the public to the League via email prior to this evening. League question facilitators screen all of the questions and may rephrase, combine, or eliminate questions to avoid duplication. We will not ask questions that are irrelevant to the office or that are designed to make a statement rather than solicit information. Questions that are hostile, embarrassing, inappropriate, or of a personal nature will not be asked. As the forum moderator, I have the final responsibility as to which questions will be asked. All of the candidates listed by the Minnesota Secretary of State's office for this office have been invited, and I believe all of the candidates are present with us tonight. We have, in alphabetical order, Drew Dixon, Kate Martins, Charlie Potts, and Marcia Rampf. Voters will select three candidates to serve on the school board, each for a four-year term. Candidates will first have two minutes for opening statements tonight. Then, on a rotating basis, we will ask each of the candidates all of the questions. They will each have 1.5 minutes to answer. At the end of the forum, each candidate will have two minutes to make a closing statement. Timers are here tonight, and they will hold up a yellow sign when there are 15 seconds left for your answer, and a stop sign when your time is up. Candidates will be allowed to finish if they are mid-sentence when the stop sign appears. Our timers this evening are Judy Allen and Cindy Olson, both members of the St. Peter Area League. We have asked each candidate to be specific in their opening statements as to the reasons they are running for office, and their unique qualities, skills, experience, or expertise they would bring to the job. We are ready to begin with opening statements, and we will do those in alphabetical order with Drew Dixon first, followed by Kate Martins, then Charlie Potts, and Marcia Rampf. If you are ready, you may go ahead.
Hi, good evening, League of Women Voters and fellow candidates. Nice to be with you here this evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and give a forum and a platform to have a discussion for us. We appreciate that. My name is Drew Dixon. Have been on the school board for three terms. I'm currently the vice chair of the board, and serving on a number of committees. We have an HR committee that's working through contract negotiations frequently. We have policy committees. We have a number of committees that we all serve on as subcommittees of the board. I'm seeking a fourth term, and I have reasons for that. I have had children in the district. This will be the first year I won't have children in the district, which is an exciting time for us. Exciting time. But I'm thankful for the time. I'm thankful for the experience that we've had. School boards are probably not exactly what you think they are. That was what I found to be true. We've spent a lot of time cutting our teeth on school finance, negotiating contracts, things that I probably hadn't been involved with before. That really picked up a number of expertise. Wow, expertise. Experiences, certainly, along the way. I'd like to continue to put that to good use to benefit the community of St. Peter, this community I believe in very strongly. So, thank you for tonight.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kate Martins.
Hi, I'm Kate Martins, and I do thank all of the League of Women Voters that are here and the opportunity for us to speak, as well as this great panel of candidates that you have in front of you. This is a good time for voters in the St. Peter Public Schools District. I am running for my second term. This is, I had 42 years of experience working with students as an educator and facilitator, and after I retired, it became important to me to continue offering community service, particularly to St. Peter where I've lived forever. I was not raised here, but, and all three of my children came from here. This is a really fraught time in education, and there is a lot of uncertainty ahead. I feel as though my teacher perspective is going to be a benefit to the community and to the students in the St. Peter School District. Our students are our greatest resource. They are our hope for the future, and they are our biggest responsibility, and providing these students with the best possible education that we can is important. I believe St. Peter has done that in the past and is continuing to do so, innovating, and being in a pretty good position compared to a lot of other districts at this point because of the fact that we have a great functioning board, a new administrator. We have been financially responsible. We've even started fixing up a middle school that was there when my kids were going through. So, this is a great community, and I hope that I get a chance to continue to serve on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie Potts.
Good evening. Thank you for providing a venue for our school board candidate forum. I'm honored to have served the last four years and now eight years total on the St. Peter School Board, and I would be honored to continue that service. There are many reasons I decided to run for a position on the school board. The primary reason being a desire to do what I can to contribute to the continued progress of St. Peter Public Schools. We are a strong district, as Kate mentioned, one I'm proud to have attended and proud to have two children currently attending, and our continued success will require consistent leadership. As an incumbent candidate and the current board chair, I'm proud of the work we have done, particularly over the last 14 months through some challenging budget times and two superintendent transitions, the most important leadership transition a district faces. I am deeply invested in providing a safe, welcoming place for all students to receive the tools they need to have a productive and meaningful education. Do our current policies and practices serve all students and families? Do all of our policies and practices, or do any of our policies and practices inhibit access or resources for any of our students? These are the kind of questions we need to address to work toward a better place for all of our children to learn and thrive. I believe very deeply in the values we talk about in our district. I believe school board members should work without an agenda other than supporting our children through their education, and I look forward to the opportunity to continue to do this work for our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcia Rampf.
Good evening. I'm Marcia Rampf. Thanks to the League of Women Voters for having us here tonight and the other sponsors. I appreciate your time and your energy to support voting not only for District 508 but voting in general. I'm currently the K-5 Library Media Specialist in a neighboring district. I'm a licensed K-6 elementary teacher, and I hold a licensed K-12 Library Media. In addition to my experience in my schools, I've spent a lot of time over the past four or five years working quite closely with our Islamic Center and tutoring and coordinating after-school and summer programming there. Many of our students in that program are new to the country, and not only do we support those students, but we support the families who are navigating some pretty challenging systems, including our school district. I'm also currently the co-president of our St. Peter Good Neighbor Diversity Council. I've been on that council for about three and a half years and really enjoying the work that we're doing there. I'm the proud mother of two St. Peter graduates, one of 2020 and one of 2025, so I am also experiencing what life is like to not have a child in school right now. And my husband Ben also lives in our community and serves on our city council. When thinking about why I want to get into being on the school board, I believe in a life of service, and when I'm thinking about serving, my experiences, my skills, my knowledge point straight towards the school board. Some of the things that are priorities for me are equity, safety, rigorous academics, and preparing well-rounded students for a bright future. Thank you.
Okay, we will now proceed with our questions. As I indicated earlier, we will go in sort of a random order. I do try to announce at the start of each question what order we'll be presenting the questions to the candidates so that you can anticipate, and if you need me to repeat a question, please do just let me know. The first question will go first to Marcia Rampf, then Charlie Potts, Drew Dixon, and finally to Kate Martins. And the first question is, what are three critical ways that K-12 schooling should impact And Ms. Rampf.
All right. Three critical ways. Well, narrowing it down is always a challenge. The first thing that pops to my mind is social-emotional learning and thinking about some of the things that are happening in our schools, in our world, things that are happening with young people, trends that we're seeing with mental health. I think we have a really big duty to make sure that children are managing their emotional wellbeing and what they can do to care for themselves. I mentioned rigorous academics. As a teacher, I absolutely know that when you expect children to be their very best, they will meet that standard. So, giving them high standards to meet will make sure that we're giving them the rigor that they need. And the other thing I mentioned was preparing well-rounded children for a future. Of course, we always kind of think about careers, but we have children who will grow up to be parents, children who will grow up to be neighbors, and different members of the community, so we have an obligation to help them prepare for all of those aspects.
Charlie Potts.
Okay, three critical ways schools should impact students. I think that one of the most important things that we talk about is either school or workforce preparedness, right? So, the students in our district, whatever they're moving on to when they enter the world beyond the hallways of St. Peter High School, that they are prepared for it, and whatever it is that they're ready to take that on, whether that is continued education or whether that is entering the workforce, the military, whatever it might be that they are prepared for that. I would echo his ramp with social-emotional learning and social development. I think that interpersonal skills and socialization are particularly post-pandemic are a thing that we're still talking about. I work, I'm the dean of students at Gustavus, and I work with, you know, the best and the brightest college students, and we see the interpersonal skill gaps that exist in the last five or six years, and I think that that is a continued point of emphasis in our K-12, is how do we close those gaps in terms of interpersonal abilities and sort of the soft skills that are required to navigate life successfully? And then I hope also another way schools should impact our students is that they understand the value of seeking knowledge, of learning, and of curiosity, that their perspective on the world has been shaped in St. Peter, and that's great, but there is a broader world to think about, and hopefully we are helping broaden their perspectives before they move on from here.
Okay. Maybe I should repeat the question just for the audience as well. What are three critical ways that K-12 schooling should impact students? And Drew Dixon would be next.
Thank you. Critical ways. First, I think is probably the most obvious, those fundamental skills that we all probably think about when it comes to K-12 schooling. We're prepping them to, we're teaching kids how to read. We're teaching math concepts. We're teaching concepts of natural science, physical sciences. We have the arts. We're exposing lots of students to lots of different opportunities to pick up, find their strengths, and those are real core building blocks that we're going to be using or they're going to be using for the rest of their lives. So, beyond that, I think another area of critical importance is for critical thinking. We want our students to be leaving a St. Peter education with, one, a good head on their shoulders, and, two, the ability to navigate our more and more increasingly digital world that can be awfully tricky, and it's getting trickier and trickier. I'm sure everyone in the room can agree with that and maybe see that themselves. So, we want to be able to have critical thinkers leave the door, and also prepping for today's world in general, and we're doing that through the use of academies. We're doing that through the use of an evolving, ever-changing curriculum and, what do we call it? Class schedule, class catalog.
This is, as I said earlier, a very uncertain time, and the best thing that we can do for our students is to provide them with the best information, the best education, and highest critical thinking skills that we can give them. They have a world of information at their fingertips, and they need to be able to use it appropriately, so that thinking ability is taught in all kinds of ways, in various contents interdisciplinary is hugely important right now. We need to have them understand that they are going to live in a world that looks way different than maybe it does here in St. Peter, and that they may have challenges that we can't even prepare them for, and we need to give them that confidence to work and produce in that area. And I think the main thing that we need to do is to instill in them the validation of their abilities, the fact that there is a responsibility that they have to the community and the state and the world in which they live, and that they have the ability to impact change, and that we need to encourage that in so many ways. The academic content, extracurriculars, co-curriculars, all of the opportunities that they may have to participate in the broad spectrum of offerings in this community is highly important. Thank you.
The second question will be offered first to Kate Martins, then Drew Dixon, followed by Marcia Rampf, then Charlie Potts. And that question is, we know how critical it is to keep our children safe. Broadly, when you hear the term "school safety," what does that encompass for you? Kate Martins.
It's, these are the days for school boards to be particularly active and involved, and the school safety, safety of the students and the community is high on everyone's list of priorities. We need to make consistent messaging available. We need to have specific response processes. We need to have the community support the security of our students. The schools themselves need to be solid in the interaction between the public safety organizations and the schools has to be absolutely fine-tuned. In St. Peter, we are installing a standard response protocol that is meant to do that, and the common language is going to be very, very helpful. As an educator, in the old days, there were all kinds of messages, there were all kinds of words, there were various things that we did, and it was not necessarily consistent between buildings and between school districts and among the community. Law enforcement officials, this new protocol is going to make consistency the help that we need.
Drew Dixon.
Yes, thank you. I mean, right out of the gate, physical security, it still pains me, it has forever, the fact that we need to have conversations about having resource officers in the school and locked, secure access doors, but that's an unfortunate reality, and we can't pretend that that isn't. So, having those secure access doors, having resource officers in around the school to be used as, not as law enforcement, but more as a resource for troubled or moments where, it's not that things get out of hand, but just as an extra resource for support for our students. It is important, so that's one critical way. I think another way that makes, helps foster safety in the schools is that students are able to see themselves within the teachers and the larger community of the school, that they have groups to identify with, and we've really made a focus on making sure that cultural inclusion and awareness is supported and celebrated within the school, and I think that's important for us to do. And we've all talked about the socio-emotional needs and changes of our student population over time. That's certainly as true now as it ever has been, and taking that seriously and adding supports there is important for us to do.
Okay. We know how critical it is to keep our children safe. Broadly, when you hear the term "school safety," what does that encompass for you? Marcia Rampf.
Safety is definitely a priority for me, and when I think about safety, I think about a lot of different levels. I think the first thing that comes to our mind is the pretty serious dangers that are happening, that can happen. And, you know, of course, we want to be making sure that we follow the best safety protocols that we can have to keep outside dangers away. Inside the building, I think one of the big things we need to do is that make sure that all of our students know that they are loved and they're important, and that every single student in our schools knows that there is at least one adult that they can turn to and talk to about anything. Along with that, we need to help our children learn to love one another and to support one another and care for one another, to be inclusive and accepting. When we think about tragedies, most often those tragedies are occurring at the hands of former students or present students, and we need to be proactive for the future in that sense. We also need adults to make sure that they're stepping in and following through with whatever needs to be done in the moment or in the time to follow up with things that are dangerous.
Charlie Potts.
School safety, what safety means to me is that students are able to show up and learn, that this is a place where the outside world is appropriately filtered so that they can have an environment conducive to learning. Safety, to echo some others, is that students are seen and heard, and their context of their lives is understood to some degree. Our teachers are amazing at getting to know our students and the things that make them tick, and that helps students feel safe and accepted, which leads to broader safety. I think St. Peter's actually been ahead of the game in terms of secure entrances. We did this work a long time ago. Some neighboring districts are just doing this work now in some of their buildings, and so I feel really good about how we've secured our buildings during the daytime and appropriately gotten people through the right way by having to check in at an office. The trainings that Kate mentioned, I think are wonderful with the common language that we'll use around response protocol. We review our policies and procedures regularly, and so we feel confident in how the administration treats safety and the importance of it, and we review that all the time as a board. We have a terrific school resource officer and a wonderful partnership with the St. Peter Police Department that gives me great comfort in sending my two children to school. And I think particularly, right, we've talked about evolving mental health needs of our students right now, and so using all these resources that we have to work together to keep those students feeling safe and treating others with respect is important.
I think we got everybody right? Okay. All right. The next question, the order of response will be Charlie Potts, Marcia Rampf, Kate Martins, and then Drew Dixon. It's a little bit of a long one. So, given the preliminary projection of a future budget shortfall in 2025, '26 that will reduce budget reserves significantly and the uncertainties surrounding both federal and state school funding, what criteria will you use to make recommendations for any cuts that must be made?
This is an issue that unfortunately is a really big part of being on the school board. It is one of our primarily, primary responsibilities is the financial health of the district. We've been through this the last couple of years in very significant and unpleasant ways. I think the first things that I think about when thinking about our budget is how do we do, in order to correct budget shortfalls, which we will always have, right? How do we reduce the impact on direct student service? So, how does it, how do we keep those cuts? How do we keep those reductions away from the classrooms and away from direct student support and direct student service? That's the most important thing to me. Our students are the main thing, and their safety and education is the main thing. We've been through this process of how do our priorities and our direction line up with our strategic plan, and then how do we filter that down to making decisions based on, okay, what's necessary, what can be sort of trimmed? Decisions are hard. Humans are the most expensive part of our budget, but those are the people who interact with our students daily, and sometimes we have to make really difficult decisions. We try to do that with as much public input as possible, knowing that we welcome that input, but it's sometimes hard to follow through on the things that everyone sees as priorities. We need to determine that as a board, and I think we do a good job of that.
Thank you. Marcia Rampf.
All right. I always try to be proactive when I'm thinking about things, so when I think about budgets, instead of thinking about cutting first, my mind goes to how can we make sure we don't have to cut? What are the things, what are the steps we can do to prevent cuts? Some of those things, you know, we might ask ourselves is how are we making sure that our enrollment is staying up? How are we attracting new families to this community? How are we attracting families to this school? Some of that's going to be community partnerships with the city, you know, thinking about housing. We can't have more kids here if we don't have places for people to live. And of course, sometimes it does come down to where are we going to make the cuts? What are we going to do? And like Charlie said, the classroom is where we want to keep the money, and the further out we go is where we have to find the room for trimming some of that off. And classroom teachers, you know, teachers know what that looks like, what is necessary, what can we do without at that level? And additionally, I'd say that, you know, we want to make sure we're offering the kind of programming that attracts people to our district as well.
Again, given preliminary projections of future budget shortfalls and uncertainties surrounding federal and state school funding, what criteria will you use to make recommendations for any cuts? And number three, Kate Martins.
I agree with Marcia. The last thing we want to do is to cut, and we do know that this is uncertain time in terms of funding. I think that there are several levels at which we can act. One of the main things is to deal with the legislature about the unfunded mandates that we have and that are continuing to come through to us. Our budgets are fixed. We can't raise prices as a business can to try to meet the rising costs. We need to make sure that the community understands how we use our money, that we are being vigilant on all of the, on all levels. We need to encourage the community and the stakeholder, other stakeholders, to participate in these decisions as they come up, doing a regular check kind of thing. decisions as they come up, doing a regular check kind of thing and keeping the communication lines open. There are things like grants and so on that we can pursue as we, as we need money. But the main thing is to stay vigilant, to stay on top of it and not to let there be any unknown or unexpected surprises that we can be particularly cautious about the planning. We also need to have our teachers and staff in, involved in this because as Marcia said, they are very aware of the kinds of things that they need and what can be expendable and what can't. Thank you.
Okay. Drew Dixon.
Yeah, all of the points that the candidates have brought up are all absolutely right. Those, all of those things go into it. So I'm not going to add anything new. My perspective on it as a board member is when we're looking at prioritizing our services and trying to make it through a budget shortfall would be that, this is where I think we really see the strength of, or the power of a, a strong superintendent, because a superintendent is really going to be helping us with, all right, we're, we're doing a 10-year rollout look of our finances. So we can see into the future as much as we can to try to anticipate what the, what the landscape will be at that time. That superintendent's really to be core in creating our strategic plans. And when we're looking at the services and the things that we could or couldn't do and what we, what might, we should or shouldn't do, aligning to that strategic plan is going to be, will always be the right answer because that helps us kind of keep our ducks in a row, in a sense, and keep us focused and going in the, in the right place at the same time consistently. And as we said before, we, we really at all, as much as possible, reduce the amount of stress and impact too for those direct student services. But that's tough. I mean, this is a, a human services organization. And so there's not a lot of fluff that doesn't involve student contact, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you. The next question will be answered first by Drew Dixon, then Kate Martins, Marcia Rampf, then Charlie Potts. It's another long one. The recent release of Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment Test Scores indicates that St. Peter students overall showed improvement or held their own relative to results reported in 2024, continuing a level of achievement higher than the state average. So the questions are how do we continue to improve student achievement in St. Peter and what areas, what are the areas of concern that the district should address?
Thank you. That is true. That has not always been true. We have seen test scores, and there's a lot of reasons that go into this, but where our test scores are maybe not as high or as strong as we would like to see. And that has maybe gone on for many years. Now, there's lots of reasons. Those assessments change, the tests change, they get fine tuned over time. Data that you're looking at is always a year or so behind. So it's a foggy picture. But to improve, so the reason that that's important to say is that there is a renewed, a continued but renewed interest on, from our perspective to say, hey, this is good, but is it good enough for St. Peter? We really try to pride ourselves as being better than average. That is the goal. And so there has been a renewed focus on those things. I think our PLCs have been instrumental in changing it. Those are learning communities where the teachers get together and they talk about how they are teaching and what they are teaching. So there's an alignment in their tactics, their alignment in their content. Those have been very important. That's kind of grassroots stuff in a way when it comes to education. Yeah, I'll leave it there. Yeah, thank you.
Kate Martins.
Standardized measurements has kind of a mixed bag. There are several things that are being used as standardized measures that have some, maybe some old goals that we need to refresh. That's one thing. Although the St. Peter schools have consistently, we are, right now, we are above the state average. We're doing well. I think one of the main things to do is to, is to look at the, look at the scores as an instructive tool rather than something that's a, that's a slap on the hand or a, and a, a bad comparison of. The staff, teachers are using these as instructive methods. This is what we need to do. There have been changes in math education. There are changes going on in, in science education, which are more appropriate to the, the learning levels of students. The READ Act is allowing us to focus on reading skills, which are integral to everything. There are curriculum review processes, which are instituted about every five to seven years. And that has, that has been revised just a bit so that there, it can be more student responsive. So there is a lot that can be done to continue to grow the progress that our students are making.
Again, this is regarding Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment Test Results. How do we continue to improve student achievement in St. Peter and what are the areas of concern the district should address? And Marcia Rampf would be next.
Great. Yes, our test scores are, one way that people look at our schools and say, how good are they? Right? As teachers, we know that those scores are one little piece of what our students are capable of, who they are, the skills that they have, their creativity, all of the other things that go along with that. When I think about our test scores and the increase staying the same, we're doing some great things. I would love to hear from teachers in regards to their input on what the rigor might be like. Maybe the, making a deep dive into students that were missing. Which ones aren't we getting to that level? Some other things to look at is the attendance. Which students aren't showing up? Another thing that I noticed on our report card is there's a question that says, "Students at my school," or "Teachers at my school care about me." And I want to say at our high school level, there were 15% of the students who either disagreed or strongly disagreed. So some of that relationship building is also important when we think about that. Students who don't think that they're cared about in the classroom aren't probably going to learn so much. So I think that's another area to improve on.
Charlie Potts.
As someone who is not a good standardized test taker, I have always been challenged by the idea that that is the measure by which we will determine how good an education is in our district. But I understand that the weight that is put on them is part of our educational landscape. And so that is why the district must look at those numbers. I do, I do want to echo, we're above state average in some areas. There's clearly work to do. But I think that that happens in a few ways. I know that individualized attention and differentiated methods are really taxing on our teachers, but they do make a difference for our students. And I've seen that our educators in our district do that. We've talked a lot about culturally responsive delivery. We've talked about curriculum improvement, the offerings that we might have that can allow for creative delivery of content and unique learning opportunities, that are yet another way beyond a standardized test that we can measure learning. Graduation rate is 94%. That's fantastic, right? We have the college and the schools program. We have all these other ways that we can look at metrics that show that learning is happening in positive ways. And so I understand the value that, that, no, I understand the importance that the state has put on that, on standardized tests. But I think that we have done exceedingly good job in lots of other areas to show that learning is happening here. Always room for refinement and improvement, but we do a pretty good job.
Okay. Next, the question will be answered first by Kate Martins, then Drew Dixon, Charlie Potts, and Marcia Rampf. And the question is, "Climate change is a major concern for many of our citizens. What additional efforts should the district take to reduce its carbon footprint?"
Oh, you gotta get the big one in. That one is a, not, never-ending challenge for everyone. And the understanding that our students are the, the ones who are going to solve our problems, that's the way that we have to approach this. We need to encourage them to be responsible. We need to give them the tools that they need to develop new ideas. We need to capitalize on things like the, the 31st year of our Habitat for Humanities building. We have scholarship, or we have solar panels that are going on. And we're right in the middle of this mend the middle process in, in, by which we're re, redoing our HVAC and heating and all of the, all of the interiors of the school district. Our new high school is relatively a pretty solid one. And we have plans that we will need to make to keep the old other buildings in the best possible position we can have for our carbon footprint. I think the main thing is to encourage student creativity and to provide them with as many pieces of information as we can and guide them as they explore new ideas and encourage that, the fact that they really are the ones who will be responsible and that we are counting on them. Thank you.
Okay. Drew Dixon.
I'm going to be honest, I'm struggling a little bit. How can we reduce our carbon footprint? I, here are some things that we've done, I think, that are going to make a positive change. And I honestly don't know if we've ever seen hard factual evidence of this. But here's what I would assume. Having new buildings, those spaces consume a lot of juice. Electricity, gas, heat, cooling, heating at all times of year. So that's a big cost for us. And those are the kinds of things that are being burned off. And those are the kinds of things that we're talking about with, with waste. So having updated buildings with our high school, likely a very positive change. We still have the middle school that was the high school. That is being retrofitted and updated in significant ways with much more efficient systems. That was a patchwork of buildings and is now being really unified. I have to believe that that's going to have a big impact on the amount of resources that we consume to keep that place heated and comfortable and safe and air moving around. I know that we've, we have solar arrays. I don't know what the impact of those have been. And that is a good question. I'm surprised that we don't. But if that were successful and that had an impact, we could offset maybe some of our energy costs and consumption costs through that, it might be worthwhile seeking more grants to further that program for other rooftops.
Charlie Potts.
I think the, the key thing for me as a board member currently is to think about that, to know that sustainability is vitally important. It is also expensive. And so how do we think about the return on investment in the ways that we can to do the things that we can right now that will make a, a long-term impact while also being mindful, careful stewards of taxpayer money? I think that we're seeing that in the, the renovation to the middle school, things like LED lights and automatic dimmers and better efficiency in the HVAC systems. I think that, and better windows that don't leak and don't have cold air blowing in all the time. Those are the, the steps that are, they are expensive, but they are the steps we can take now to sort of chip away at this sustainability thing that we need to continue to make a focus. Dr. Graff is joining the Sustainability Committee that's starting in St. Peter. And I think that's going to be wonderful to hear insights from those who are experts that he can bring back to the way we think about future projects and, and future programs in, in the district. So, but also, when I think about the finances of it, right, there are awesome opportunities for grants and for rebates and things that we can be thinking about. And I think we have a lot of the right administrators in place who will think about that with our facilities and with our programs moving forward. So, yeah, thank you.
Marcia Rampf.
All right. Yeah, to kind of piggyback off everyone, you know, I think even in our own homes, right, when we think about our own carbon footprint, we want to think about the efficiency that we have. So as we're making improvements and can afford to make improvements, those are really things we need to consider. And I think that we have considered. I think the community supports that. And some other things that I just kind of thought of that we could do, I know that there are a few different bike paths, walking paths, that are being put in within the city that will make it more accessible for more folks to walk or bike to work. Maybe we offer some sort of incentive for students or staff to walk and ride their bike to work or carpool. There's also programs out for buses where there are alternative energy busing grants available. So I would love to look into that option. Buses are obviously putting out of a lot of emissions when we think about that carbon footprint in our district. And of course, the education side of it, like Kate mentioned, our kids are very smart. They have really wonderful ideas. I'd love to see a, a group get together and maybe come up with some ways that the kids think they could do some, some changes to make sure that our district is doing the right thing.
All right. The next question will be answered in order, the following order. Marcia Rampf, Charlie Potts, Kate Martins, and Drew Dixon. As a school board member, you receive a phone call from a parent concerned about a topic or book included in their child's classroom curriculum. How would you respond to the parent's concern? Marcia Rampf.
All right. Ironically, I'm a library media specialist, so this is kind of my wheelhouse. Of course, the first thing I would do is listen. I, parents, families have a right to be concerned about things that they're concerned about. I would want to listen and find out what is going on. I would also make sure, and I've actually already looked at it, St. Peter has a pretty great policy in regards to what it takes to have a book or classroom materials reviewed for possible removal. And I would direct that concern to probably the building principal to have that process started so that it would be reviewed and go through that. Within that policy, there's protections for, for students because students have a right to access information. And students have a right to, to read. So within our policy, we do a really nice job protecting those students' rights to access information and making sure that everybody has their, their voices heard when it comes to that.
Okay. Charlie Potts.
Yeah, I think probably pretty succinct, right? Listen, listen to the, the concern from, from a community member and a parent. Connect them with the principal of the building to discuss the issue. I think that is incredibly important is to not make assumptions or give answers that aren't mine to give. But to connect them with a principal, it's not an argument. I'm not, I'm not there to have an argument. I trust the processes we, and procedures we have in place to decide if something is relevant to the curriculum. We have language in our policies and our handbooks about how a student might opt out, or a family might opt out of certain material. But also how a student, or how that, I think a principal could help explain how materials were chosen and have that discussion. So my job as a board member is not to have an agenda other than helping educate our children. And so I would want our building principal, I want to want our superintendent and building principals to be involved in that conversation.
Kate Martins.
Yes. There, what, what we have is a very solid policy, which we review on a regular basis. And there is a procedure by which a parent can make a request for more information or for their student to maybe not use a particular piece of, of information. I would start with the teacher. I would, I would, this is not our job as school board members. We do not do this. We are part of a chain. And the teacher is the first person with whom there needs to be a conversation. And that would be my first encouragement. And then from there on to follow through, as, as both Marcia and Charlie said, with the principal and superintendent and the policy. And there's a form and there's alternatives, possibilities for selecting those. We have about a hu, over 160 policies in our policy guides. And there's something that covers almost everything that could happen. And they're all very legal based. They are not something that we're making up just to be, just to be difficult or to be accommodating in unnecessary ways. Policy is there. Go up line and thank you for the information. And I, I would probably follow up with the And I would probably follow up with the principal myself or just a heads up that somebody had asked. Thank you.
Okay. Drew Dixon.
Yep, these are all, you all say it, exact same thing. This is a hundred percent true. I would listen to the concern. And again, true, wouldn't judge, wouldn't argue. That's not my place. We do have a process or a policy in place with a very outlined process, procedure. I don't have it memorized, but I do note it includes things like communicate your concerns with the teacher, communicate your concerns with the principal, have a discussion about accommodations, about a particular piece of material. And it goes on and on and on. But it's very concrete. And it's used and successfully every, every year. But most important is, I think it's important that people know that, yes, there is a process for this. And yes, it's okay and we will listen to you. And Kate is absolutely right. It really isn't our wheelhouse to be so much involved with individual classrooms and materials in that way. That's just the reality of it. Thanks.
Okay. Another long one would be first answered by Drew Dixon, then Kate Martins, Marcia Raft, and Charlie Potts. Recent changes in U.S. immigration policies and practice can affect both the students and staff of our school district. Students whose immigration status may be challenged and staff who may be approached by personnel from agencies such as Immigrations and Customs Enforcement regarding students. I guess the question isn't so long. It's the background. The question is, how do you think the district should approach this issue?
I think we've been very clear about how we've approached this. And it's the same with any kind of contact from the outside world coming into the district. If it's law enforcement, that's fine. You can speak with the administration. And if you have a warrant for specific items within the school, then you must be allowed in. But beyond that, you're not invited to wander the halls or, you know, poke around inside the buildings without that needed legal document.
Kate Martins.
We have been talking about this a lot and in our various meetings recently. As Drew said, we have a, we have a policy in terms of access to buildings. People are not able to just walk. I can't just walk in unless I'm being announced and follow the protocol. We need our students to feel safe. We need our staff to feel safe. We need education to be ongoing and that can't be done in an atmosphere of fear or anticipation. We have liaison officers who work very closely with the various communities who might be involved in some sort of an immigration action. And they have provided to those families and to the staff the kinds of procedures, the kinds of things that are necessary, the alternative, the solutions to problems and what's, what's, what is legal and what is not. The law is very clear at this point in Minnesota as to what is available to outside information and what is not. And we have, we have personal information that is rather, it's not what we used to have when we had my, my phone number, my address, how many dogs I had, all of that on it. It's just restricted to the ultimate necessary information. We do a lot to protect our students.
Marcia Raft.
Yeah, I always like to point right back to a policy or a procedure when there's things like this. The legalities of it all. I think on the next step, I, a very important thing, and I'm not sure where we're at with this, would be making sure that the staff, the entire staff, understands those legalities and what that should look like, what their rights are, what is expected of them. If somebody approaches you and asks this, what, how should they respond? We also want to educate our community, making sure, especially those who might be living in a little fear compared to others, that we help them feel reassured about what the district's steps will and will not be. And we could do that by connecting with different community leaders, different community groups to help assist in doing some of that education. If people are fearful to send their kids to school, kids aren't in school. And if kids aren't in school, they're not learning. So we need to make sure that they're aware that we have their child's best interests at heart.
Okay. Charlie Potts.
Yep, we are obligated to follow the law as a, as a public, or public K-12. So we, we have to follow the law. We, I do feel that we have very thoroughly vetted our policies and procedures related to information that we can share. In fact, we just reviewed this policy this summer about what qualifies as directory information and what can be shared beyond the walls of the building. And so I feel very good about how we handle that. As Kate mentioned, the cultural liaisons do wonderful work. We have, again, I mentioned our SRO earlier, St. Peter Police, who we partner with, who have care and safety of our kids at the front of their mind at all times. And so I feel comfortable with our policy. I feel comfortable with our procedures. But I know that that doesn't always eliminate fear or concern of our community members. And so I think that we need to continue to improve the support we provide in understanding what is bringing about that fear and how that we can, again, ensure that the only thing that matters is the education of our children in a safe and comfortable environment. And so how do we do that? Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Well, looking at the clock here, I think we have time for one more question before your closing remarks. And we will have the, the order of responding this time will be Kate Martins, Charlie Potts, Marcia Raft, then Drew Dixon. What is your vision for the future of the school district? Kate Martins.
Oh, all this and haven't tuned on. We have a, an exceptional school district. We have a community that is very, very supportive of our educational process and our students. I think that I would like to see that there, we could increase the communication, which is already good, among the various components of our community. The businesses, the groups that are active in the community, the events that happen in the community, our schools becoming more, more part of the overall benefit that the student derives through 24/7 of their life. We have worked very hard to make moves toward all students feeling heard and seen and respected. We're working on some culturally diverse, or some culturally responsive curriculum changes and additions to the community. We've done a lot of things within the school. Like I said, the Habitat for Humanity, I'd like to see that encouraged. Our academies are wonderful. We've got a transfer curriculum that is the first, I think, in the state right now where kids are gonna be able to get college careers started while they're in high school. We've got all kinds of good things. I just would like to keep it going the way it's, in the positive direction.
Okay. Charlie Potts.
Yeah, we had just recently hired a superintendent, hired a superintendent who recently started. And I think that that, as we talked about during that process, the search for a superintendent is an outstanding opportunity to reevaluate who we are, what we, what we stand for, what we value, what our priorities are. And I love that we are starting to do that. So my vision, my vision is that the district and its leadership can find the vision, right? And our job is to support that vision. But I feel extremely comfortable with the work Dr. Graff is doing, kind of built on the shoulders of his predecessors who have, who are still helping him in this transition. And I think that that gives me comfort. That gives me hope. As Kate mentioned, I, my, my sort of philosophical vision, right? Is that all students feel seen and heard. As Kate mentioned, that all students are prepared for what's next and that they are given the opportunity to learn every day and to do that in a safe place. And so, yeah, my, my hope is that we support the vision of the district moving forward. Not necessarily that we entirely set it by ourselves as a board. That's not our job. But to, to include all stakeholders in the community and in the district to come up with that vision together. Thank you.
Marcia Raft.
Charlie just kind of stole my first line there. I definitely have a vision for making sure that the stakeholders in our community help build the vision. You know, thinking about what I've heard from families and community members. You know, they want to continue to see the wide array of classes that we offer at St. Peter's schools and the opportunities that our students have. They want to see those rigorous classes and our kids being very high achieving. Arts are extremely important to this community. And I'd love to see how we could expand our already wonderful arts programs. Another thing that is always a winner for most people is small class sizes. We want our students to make sure that they're getting enough attention in their classes. And small, small class sizes is always desirable. We want students to love school. We want them to enjoy learning. I always look at things from an equity perspective. It's, it's where my wheelhouse is. And I think that I have seen in the time that I've been with, in the city of St. Peter, it's growing, but I would like to see more diversity in those extra classes, in those extracurricular activities. My, my, my kids got to participate. I would love to see everybody else's kids participate where they want to as well.
Drew Dixon.
My vision for the district is very similar. And I won't say clear, but the elements are clear. Access to quality education for all students. Appropriate and equitable supports for all students. That all students feel welcome, feel seen, are celebrated and affirmed, have a community. And that we have a well-aligned district goals that align with our strategic plan from the superintendent to our admin team, to our teachers, to the students, the staff, the parents of the district. An alignment along that common goal is, I think, a high-minded goal, achievement for us to, to, to get to. And if done well and appropriately, that ultimately is gonna mean high, high and above-average achievement for all students of the district.
All right. That concludes our questions for this evening. We'll, we'll move on to the closing remarks. And as I said earlier, each of the candidates has two minutes to share their, their final remarks. We will proceed first with Charlie Potts, then Marcia Raft, Drew Dixon, and Kate Martins. Yeah, go right ahead.
Thank you again for this opportunity to be here and providing the venue for this forum. I have enjoyed my experience serving in the St. Peter School Board. Eight years of experience in total. And while sitting in a chair at the table does not necessarily translate to strength. I recognize that. I do feel that I've been an active, engaged, committed member of the board during my time and have worked really hard to influence the board in positive ways. I'm proud of the things that our district has accomplished in my time on the board. I feel I provide a critical eye, a calm demeanor, an honest approach, and possess the integrity required to serve the district and our community well. I appreciate listening and hearing multiple perspectives. I place great value on observing before acting. I'm not afraid to ask questions or seek understanding, and I am comfortable being decisive. Most importantly, I'm extremely hopeful and optimistic about our district. I believe in what we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcia Raft.
Thanks again for having us here tonight. I think the students and staff at St. Peter Public Schools are really lucky to have a lot of people who are so passionate about making sure that we offer our students and our families the best that we can. I hope that I've shown you that my experience as a teacher, as a community leader, particularly my efforts with equitable efforts, has shown to you what I could offer as a school board member and the perspective and the connections that I have within the community that go along with that. I also look forward to working as a team. There are so many bright minds in the community on the board already that it would be enjoyable work for me to keep doing the service that I want to do for our community. Thank you.
Drew Dixon.
Again, thank you to the League of Women Voters for having us here tonight and having a, fostering a platform to have these discussions. I, I'm thankful for the time that I have had on the board. I feel like I have learned a lot. And I, we've, we've gone through a lot of things. And I've been sitting at this table for a, a number of them. And I'm happy to, honored, really do have helped in any way, shape, or form, bring those things to fruition. Probably the most impactful thing any board member will do will be in hiring a new superintendent. And we've done that a small number of times. That's the number one most impactful thing that we will do. And I'm thankful for that experience. We've been through a number of major building projects, a new high school, a renewed middle school. We've strengthened relationships within our own city, the community, through the building projects out with the new high school, the Community Spirit Park, which is a joint venture between the two entities. It's pretty rare for any, any student or school and city to enter into a long-term relationship like that, because I think often they don't work out. It's working out for us and it's gonna be great for as long as I am aware and can think. That's been great for us. So it's things like that, those kinds of wins, that, those, that forward-thinking vision for making us a better place for these students. Because ultimately, that's the whole point, is to educate our kids and take them into the world as better people and good citizens.
Kate Martins.
I love, I love to be able to go last like Drew. This is an amazing thing. The richness of the candidates that you see in front of you is just an indication of what a terrific opportunity it is for our students here in the St. Peter School District and for everyone who works here and for the community of St. Peter. We have a collaborative energy at all levels that is designed to engage students with what they feel as a passion, show them how they are involved and responsible for their own learning and to set them forth with the best support that they can possibly have into a world in which they are, they are comfortable participating because of what they've learned here. I'd love to see us continue the progress that we have been making. I want to make sure that our budget is, is as good as it can possibly be. Our enrollment continues to grow. Our, our staff, our administrative team is par excellence. You can't do anything better than what we're doing right now. I really do see a need for more legislative involvement by our school district in order to push the effort to get schools the equity that they need compared to businesses. That is something that's important to me. A lot of, I'm gonna just throw in a plug here. This is Bill Kautz's job usually, but he's not here tonight. But that is about the responsibility of our families, our parents, to continue to fill out forms that we used to call free and reduced lunch forms. But there are forms that we need to have that determine the kind of funding that we get. And they're all available and, and everybody can fill them out. We derive a lot of benefit from those kinds of numbers that come in that support everything that we do. I am happy to be running again for a school board position.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. This concludes our forum. If we did not get to one of your questions, please contact the candidates directly. Contact information is available at the Minnesota Secretary of State's website, mnvotes.gov, under Elections and Voting, Candidate Filings. I want to thank our candidates for participating this evening. Thanks also go to Tony Peregren of the City of St. Peter for space and videography support, our cosponsors, the St. Peter Chamber of Commerce and St. Peter Herald, as well as my fellow League volunteers. To our viewers of this recording, thank you for watching. For more information about voting and these candidates, please visit mnvotes.gov or Remember to vote. The election will be held November 4th, and early voting starts on September 19th.